Call this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd. It is 3:10 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston?
I'm here.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendez.
Sorry, I was here. I was just...
Yeah, I could see her. I could see her waving. She just wasn't...
Thank you.
The audio wasn't coming through.
Thank you. We have a form present.
Usually, we have citizen comment at this time period, but no one has signed up. So, we will go straight to presentations. Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation and status update on the Purgatory Creek Improvements Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today's first presentation will be provided to you by project engineer, Tim Wilson. Tim is now overseeing the Purgatory Creek Project and will be providing scope, schedule, and potential grant funding impacts. Thank you.
All right. It's an exciting project. We're looking forward to hearing about it.
Okay. Good afternoon, Council. As Ms. Reyes said, I'm Tim Wilson. I'm a project engineer with the City of San Marcos, taking over the Purgatory Creek Project. And based on what I can see in the past project folder, y'all have not received an update on this project in quite a few years. So, if you will, I'm going to start with a little bit of background and refresher on the project info before I get into the update. So, just to get your bearings, as you can see here on the screen, on the left side of the image, running vertically, you'll see Wonder World Drive. On the right side of the image, you'll see the San Marcos River. The dark blue line, running more or less horizontally, is the Purgatory Creek Channel. And our project is shown in the turquoise and yellow. The project is split into two phases. The turquoise represents Phase One. It runs from the San Marcos River to Johnson Avenue. And then Phase Two carries on from Johnson Avenue up to Wonder World Drive. That's shown in the yellow. Quickly, I will just point out, on the right side of the image, in the circled in magenta, is the spillway to the San Marcos River. Just want to get your bearings. I'm going to talk about the spillway a little bit later in the presentation. And I want to make sure that you're aware of where that's located before I get to that point. Next slide, please. Okay, so first and foremost, this is a flood mitigation project. We are making improvements to the creek channel in order to increase the flow capacity and reduce the flood risk on adjacent structures. We're still early in the design process here, but our initial flood modeling shows that approximately 90 structures are going to be able to be removed from the floodplain. On the image here, you see the mapping of our initial flood study. The light blue represents the present 100-year floodplain, and the dark blue represents the improved floodplain after the project is completed. And then secondary to that, we will be constructing a 10-foot shared-use path along the length of the channel. By constructing the shared-use path, we'll be turning the floodplain into an amenity that the public can enjoy, while also providing an option for an alternative mode of transportation. The image on the right there is a representation of the shared-use path that we're planning to build. Next slide, please, Hayden. Okay, what you see here is our typical cross-section for the improvements. It includes a low-flow channel that is going to be constructed to mimic a natural stream bed. Then, beyond that, there's a much wider, high-flow channel that will be able to convey additional capacity in the larger rain events. Within that larger channel, we'll have a wide array of native plantings, and of course, the shared-use path that I mentioned on the previous slide. Next slide, please, Hayden. Okay, so, project records indicate that the last update council received was way back in May of 2019. That was right after we received our preliminary engineering concept plans. So, a lot has been going on since then. In the Phase One... Sorry, I can't read up there. The Phase One area, we have completed the 30% design and received the engineer's cost estimate. We have begun going after grant funding. So, we currently have three that have been submitted and are in review. That's the FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant, the FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant, and the Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure Funding Grant. In the Phase Two area, San Marcos River Foundation has acquired some funding for trails. And in partnership with San Marcos Green Belt Alliance, we anticipate to have some natural trails constructed in the Phase Two area this coming spring. And then, over the full extent of the project, Phase One and Phase Two area, of course, we have ongoing permitting through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA, Union Pacific Railroad. And we also have ongoing land acquisitions. We've got $2 million that we received from the Hayes County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. And that funding is being used to purchase land towards building the trail throughout the full extents of the project. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Can you go back? Hayden, could you... Thank you. Quickly, I just want to point out, the engineer's cost estimate that we received on the 30% plans came back much higher than we anticipated. The estimate for Phase One is about $40 million, which is why we've begun going after these grant applications. It's become clear that this project cannot be funded through the CIP alone, and we're going to have to go after outside sources of funding. If awarded, any one of these three grants would fund $36 million of the $40 million of construction. So, pretty significant grants that we're going after here. And I'll show you how that impacts the budget here on the next slide. Hayden, now, next slide, please. Okay, so, the top bar that you see here is the Phase One costs. I already mentioned the $40 million estimated construction cost. And once we add in design, permitting, and land acquisition, we're looking at about $50 million total for the Phase One project. The second line is the Phase One funding. We've got 4.1 million in previously-approved CIP, another $2 million in the POSAC funding. That 6.1 is what we're currently operating with. And then, we have another 3.2 coming in the 2025 CIP. That is to complete the design of Phase One. And then, we have 6.7 further down the road in the 2027 CIP. That's to go towards construction. So, that leaves us with a funding gap for Phase One of about $34 million. Phase Two, similarly, we have a $27 million cost estimate for construction. And currently, set aside in the 2031 CIP, we only have $3.2 million. So, that leaves a funding gap of $23.8 million. Next slide, please. So, now, here you see how the grant funding comes into play. The dark blue there that was added is the $36 million potential grant funding for the grant applications that we currently have in review. And as I mentioned earlier, that would cover 90% of the construction costs. The remaining 10% would be the responsibility of the city. And that would be funded through the CIP and that 6.7 million that you see there set aside for 2027. So, there is potential that if we are awarded some of these grants, then we may have to modify the CIP a little bit to accelerate that funding so that we can meet the deadlines of the grants. Next slide, please, Hayden. What you see here is our project schedule. This is the timeline, assuming that we don't receive any grant funding. So, we'll start on the left side here in September 2024. I've got listed the proposed on-call contract with our consultant, LAN. I'll speak about that a little bit later in our next steps. Once that contract is executed, we've got two years scheduled to complete the permitting and Phase One design. Then, we'll enter a period of developing a funding strategy. So, we're going to continue applying for grants year after year, but we'll also explore any other potential options that we have available to us for getting this project funded. We're pretty confident that we can have this go to construction by 2030. And with a two-and-a-half-year construction timeline, that puts construction completion at summer of 2032. Next slide, please. So, here's how it changes if we are awarded one of these grants. Assuming we are awarded one of the three grant applications that are currently in review, the grant funding will come with a pretty tight deadline for using the funds. So, our design and permitting process gets compressed a little bit with the goal of beginning construction in January 2026. And as you can see, that moves the completion of Phase One up from summer of 2032 to now. It would fall summer of 2028. So, pretty significant improvement there if we can manage to secure some grant funding. Next slide, please. Okay. Now that we've gotten through the project details, budget, and schedule, I'd like to draw your attention back to the spillway that I pointed out earlier in the presentation. We've pivoted a little bit recently when it comes to our design intent. And I want to make sure that we are clearing upfront with you about the direction that we're headed here. On the left side of the screen, you'll see a clip from our preliminary engineering concept plans. And as you can see in the illustration, we're showing people walking and playing down in the bottom of the spillway channel. And then, on the right side of the screen, you'll see our engineer drawings from the 30% design plans. And again, you can see the pedestrian sidewalk is down in the base of the channel. And you can even see an access ramp that goes down to the plunge pool and accesses the San Marcos River. So, it's pretty clear that, up to this point, the design has been geared towards encouraging river access at the spillway. Next slide, please, Hayden. So, what has changed? We sat down with our local river experts from Parks and Recreation, Edwards Act for Habitat Conservation Plan Management, and the San Marcos River Foundation. And it turns out that there are a lot of good reasons why we don't want to encourage river access at this point. So, the wild rice... I'm sorry, it's really hard to see in the image on here. But if you look at an aerial image of this area, the San Marcos River, the wild rice is really abundant here. And it's really well-established. And as you know, everywhere that we do have river access points, that wild rice gets trampled, gets uprooted, washed out, and then it's gone and really hard to reestablish. In addition to that, it provides good habitat for other endangered species that live in the river. So, we really do want to maintain the bed of wild rice here in this location. We also have an Army Corps of Engineers permit for impacts to the river. And showing less impacts to this stand of wild rice is going to help us with permitting. Any improvements that we can show are going to help us get permitted here. And so, again, trying to maintain the wild rice there. In addition to that, Parks and Recreation is... They've got a big task on their hands to manage river access and contain our river users to the designated access points. And so, we don't want to exacerbate that issue by adding another river access point, particularly here where this is a little bit narrower, steeper... Oh, sorry. narrower, deeper section of the river. Currents can get a little bit swifter. And then, right there at the railroad tracks is a pretty deep section. So, it's not really a great place to have kids playing in the water where they could get swept down into that deeper section by the railroad tracks. So, we don't want to create an issue for our Parks and Recreation Department by creating a river access point where it's not really a safe place to be. So, when we begin the 60% design plans, we're going to start off with a workshop specifically looking at the spillway. And we're going to be looking at different ways that we can discourage access at this point. And that may be creating grade separation between the pathway and the spillway. That may include tying into the existing fences and rails that are there to prohibit access to the river. And it may even include some heavy plantings in the base of the spillway to discourage community members from getting down in the spillway and trying to use that as a point to access the river. So, all this is just kind of ideas at this point. But I just wanted to let you know that when we kick off the 60% design, that's the kind of things that we're going to be looking into. But we're geared towards discouraging river access at the spillway. And I wanted to make sure that we were clearing upfront about that before we move forward. Next slide, Hayden. So, next steps, I'll go back to... On the timeline, I mentioned the LAN design contract. So, the current contract with LAN only scopes through the 30% design plans. In this next council meeting, may potentially get pushed to October, but we're targeting the next council meeting. You'll see another contract with LAN to finalize the designs. This fall, actually, next month, we hope to hear back on two of the grants that we've applied for. And the Texas Water Development Board grant should follow a few months later. So, we'll be finding out pretty quickly here whether or not we've been awarded for the three grants that we've got out in review right now. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're working through acquisitions throughout the project. And we have completed surveys. We're going out for appraisals right now. So, pretty quickly here, we're going to be making offers on projects throughout the extent... I'm sorry. On properties throughout the extent of the project. So, that's what we've got going on right now. Hayden, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. It's just questions at this point. I want to thank you for your time, for letting me come to present an update to you. Happy to answer any questions that you have. We also have Laura here, who's our project manager with LAN, that would be able to answer any questions from the consultant side if you have any.
Your hand is up.
He actually answered my question.
Okay. It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Good timing before we're asked to spend how much?
Yes, yes. Very much.
Yeah, good move. Okay, I think we're good with that. So...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trevino, on to item two.
Receive a staff presentation on the fiscal year 2025 capital improvements program as contained within the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget.
Sean Condor is here today to provide counsel with the final fiscal year 2025 CIP that will be adopted with the 2025 budget. In addition, he will provide an update on any revisions that have been made to the CIP since it was delivered to council on May 21st, 2024. Staff has taken a collaborative and inclusive approach to sharing this information with the public in a digestible and transparent manner. Efforts include developing a map that highlights projects, area scope, and timeline. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Sean Condor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next slide. All right, so, this is just counsel bullet points on the CIP as it relates to the strategic plan. In terms of the quality of life and sense of place, we make sure the master plans align with the current comprehensive plan. Provide opportunity for public engagement to receive feedback from the residents on the projects. We ensure CIP projects in the downtown area are scoped to promote downtown vitality. And we look for opportunities to include art in the CIP projects. In terms of our economic vitality, we ensure master plans align with the current comprehensive plan to promote responsible growth. In terms of public safety, core service, and fiscal excellence, we ensure debt models are coordinated with the CIP to consider the impacts of the CIP to the budget. We pursue grant funding on projects when feasible, and will develop and implement the CIP to maintain infrastructure needs. In terms of mobility and connectivity, we maintain and coordinate the transportation master plan to ensure multimodal transportation with CIP projects. We coordinate with Campbell to ensure specific San Marcos projects are identified in the Safe Streets for All program. In terms of environmental protection, we incorporate green stormwater and water and energy conservation infrastructure into CIP projects. And we incorporate and anticipate future needs of the CIP... of the city into CIP projects to mitigate future risk and create resilient infrastructure. Next slide. So, here's where we are in the process. You know, we're kind of at the tail end of the 2025 process. We can only start in October, in which we get the 2024 list, and we start generating the 2025 CIP. We go through department reviews in the October-November timeframe, followed by our funding constraints exercises in the December-January timeframe with the goal of finalizing the CIP for everybody in February. And then, I go through the presentations to P&amp;Z and the Neighbor Commission in the March-April timeframe. And then, I have to deliver the draft CIP to council in May. We are at the second-last step, which is I present the final CIP today. And then, it will be formally adopted with the budget at the next council meeting. Next slide. So, this is likely... We've only had one change. It's, you know, changes... We're trying to hold off on the changes unless it severely impacts the CIP, meaning the changes required because of the 2025 funding. And one project did rise to that effect, and that's the IH-35 Shared Use Path Connection Project. We had to add $300,000 to that. And the reason for that is really it's an effect of pursuing grants on projects. This just happened a bit. We applied for two grants, and we were awarded two grants. And so, it's a good problem to have. So, what that $300,000 does, it basically covers the local match required for the second grant we received. And so, just to kind of give your bearings here, the... It's going to create a pedestrian access point between the Crooks Park or Crook Park and the IH-35. And yes, next slide. So, I'm going to kind of cover the grants a little bit because I figured questions might come up about the two grants. So, we applied for the city to pay for all design costs. It's to be in the $250,000 to $300,000 range. Both grants will cover construction costs. And it's essentially at the same spot. But we have the Transportation Alternative Set-aside Program, which will receive $1.2 million in federal funding. On that program, we're actually able to use transportation credits. So, there actually is no required local match on that funding source. In addition, we have the congressional funding through the FY 2024 community project funding through the Highway Infrastructure Program. And we can thank Congressman Greg Cassar for that. He put a good word for us and he got that funding for us. And the federal grant there is about $790,000. And that does require a local match of 20%, which is about $120,000, plus the Texas Oversight Fee of about $50,000. And so, with those two grants, we can spend anywhere from $1.5 to $2 million. And that's our goal, is we want to make sure that we take all that federal money and expend it. And so, as we go, we should have a design some here in September. We'll figure out what we can do. But we're going to basically make this the best project we can with the money we got. Next slide. So, in terms of the actual 2025 CIP, these are the totals we're working with, is we have about $15.8 million in general funds, just under $43 million in water wastewater. Stormwater is just under $18 million, and electric is 8.4. I do want to note that, on the wastewater side, we council-approved an agreement in May 2024 for a second wastewater treatment plant, which will help offset the funding needs by the ratepayers in the amount of $30 million for this fiscal year or this CIP. And then, also for 2025, general funds will be used to cover the stormwater projects. Next slide. So, the next steps are to formally adopt the CIP, which will occur with the budget at the next meeting on September 17th. Next slide. And this is just a location of all the places if you can get a copy of the CIP. We have digital versions. We've got PDFs. We've got hard copies. Whatever your heart desires. And then, we have a... We keep a copy in the library, and we also have a copy in our office. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions?
I've got one comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Gleason.
Thanks. Appreciate all the work on the CIP. I understand how complicated it is. And it's a lot of reading material. I'm thrilled about the shared-use path connections. Super happy that we received the grants. That path has changed my world, getting back and forth from the east and west side of the highway. I'm still blown away that this is $2 million to add this stretch of path in. I still have some problems with that because when I come across now, TexDOT already has the shared-use path to the sidewalk. They've already improved the sidewalk across the bridge connecting to Girl Scout. And all we're going to do is take the shared-use path and go behind Discovery all we're going to do is take the shared use path and go behind Discovery and connect it to that shared use path in that bridge. And I've ridden it multiple times, and when I think about how much we're spending on that little connection, I'm just wondering if that's the best use. When we've got the sidewalk by the Discovery Center, we've got the new sidewalk on the access road, the underneath the interstate is done. So I'm curious of why that price tag is so high when the city already owns the land for that short connection of why that costs so much.
Sure, the majority of the cost is because it's actually a bridge over the creek. So there's a little feeder creek that feeds down. So right now, Crooks Park, that's the majority of the cost. It's about, and again, it's it's two grant applications, so it's about one point two millions for just the bridge infrastructure alone. And so the other is going to be just the sidewalk, which is not a lot of expense, and then lighting as well.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at with that bridge. I'm just not a hundred percent sold that that bridge is necessary. I when I come across the highway and I get on the new stretch of highway and the new brand-new sidewalk that Tech Dot has, I go down to Girl Scout, I can still get across the bridge. It's not very far out of the way. And when I come across the Discovery Center and I come in front of Herbert's, that's really the stretch that is a problem, but we have a sidewalk there of why we couldn't have taken the city property and expanded that a little bit and just increased that shared use path right down to connect and and made this project a little more affordable. I mean, I'm not, I'm appreciating this was being done, but I've ridden it multiple times last few weeks, and I'm like, this is a really expensive project to gain me a few hundred yards of connectivity.
Right, so at the end of the day, we're anticipating the cost of the city probably being around two to three hundred thousand with all the federal money. And so at this point, you the changing the grant application is not feasible?
No, I know, and I know it's partially because we're getting the grant money, but it's probably it's but it's still the overall cost to me. I'm like, hey, you know, I the the bridge itself, I know, it's and so that's my hold up. I understand the money's coming from the federal side of things, but when I look at the overall total bill of this, and I'm going to have to explain to my constituents, this was two million dollars of taxpayer money to increase this because it's coming from the federal government's taxpayer money. That's my hold up on it is I didn't think this project was overall going to end up being that expensive, especially since Tech Dot already improved my mobility. They already have the over underpass done. They've already got the sidewalk all the way done down the access road. That was the more dangerous part to me was getting across the highway and then getting down the sidewalk to the highway, and then I'm already pretty well connected. That that's all I'm saying is like this price tag seems kind of high to me for what I'm getting out of it. And I just wanted to point it out that I I just have some reservations about the total cost of this. So my constituents say, hey, what do we get for two million bucks? I'm like, well, we're getting some extra connectivity, but I just have some reservations about the total cost, even if the federal government is funding eighty percent of this. So.
What I'm sorry, what what's the advantage on the bridge? Is that giving us another bridge across the river?
Yes, there's a at Crooks Park, there's a bridge that we can't get across right now, and so we're connecting the cross town pathways path, which was completed last year, the ten foot that kind of parallels the river. So it's a kind of a scenic route as well as that for those folks wanting to not just get across, but to access the parks and the features of the parks as well. So it creates that point that, you know, yeah, it's just a roundabout way to get where you're saying, but this is a more direct path and a little bit more enticing to residents who just want to get to the river.
Because you're on a bike.
And I walk it, and I biked it just about every day this week.
But I'm I'm my question is, is this something that's needed for those who are walking? And do we need an extra access across the river? Is that why we're doing this?
Yeah, so initially, this was part of the cross-town pathways, the full scope. And so technically, we had to pull this section out back oh, five, ten years ago, whenever there's some funding constraints. So this is really just finishing what was always in that scope. And so.
Yeah, I mean, I I share Mr. Gleason's concerns because even if it's not coming out of local taxpayer pocket, as my colleague Ron Hart used to say, it's the left back pocket is coming out of the right pocket, but it's still coming out of taxpayers' pocket. I wish we'd had this conversation a long time ago.
Well, and I I didn't know whether we were going to receive the federal grants, and I wasn't sure what the overall cost of it was going to end up being, and I wasn't sure what Tech Dot stuff was going to look like, right? Like, I had no idea what Tech Dot was going to pick up and what that was going to look like when they got all their sections done, including is it going to be safe getting up and down the access roads? And it's transformed things quite a bit, and I mean, I I appreciate it like, and it's and it's going to definitely keep me off cheating and in front of Herbert's and other places and improve connectivity. It's just the scope of it is is quite a bit of money for two million dollars, it could build a lot of trails, including out at the green belt that we have that we don't have. You know, I mean, there's just places I look at two million dollars, I'm like, additional connectivity could be probably used, but.
But but it's another bridge across the river in an area where a lot of people access.
It's not the river itself, it's one of the little side.
I I meant creek.
That little side creek.
Okay.
And it's going to be more scenic, and it'll keep pedestrians off of the sidewalk in front of Herbert's, and then including getting you off the access road sooner. So there is some safety involved. It's just the overall cost of it, I just have some reservations about.
Okay. Anybody else?
Are you talking about?
Mr. Gonzalez, into the microphone, please.
Are you talking about where the slide used to be years back? Where the other this other bridge is?
Where were the underpass, the underpass that Tech Dot took out?
Right.
There's now a shared use path, and and Tech Dot did the access road sidewalks, and they finished the path underneath the interstate. And they want to connect it now to the rest of the trail systems directly instead of having to utilize the roads of the parking lots. So it's just trail connectivity, and 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 overall, it's going to be more aesthetically pleasing, it's going to be more shade, it's going to be a little safer. It's just when I look at the cost of two million dollars, it's like.
But but we're here now.
Yeah, we're here now, and I'm going to support it. It's just I didn't think this was going to end up being quite that much money.
We always hope it's not that much money.
Well, and I hate to take an additional three hundred grand from the CIP if it's for a project that is going to help connectivity, but is it a hundred percent necessary? I'm not sold.
Did the three hundred come from anywhere else, or are we just adding to the CIP?
Yes, it did not, nothing had to, it did not come from anywhere else. We had the capacity to increase it.
We're just adding it.
But I mean, ultimately, I'm looking forward to having a trail system all the way around town. There are a lot of lacking areas, and this is going to be, it is going to look really nice and be a little safer, so appreciate all your work on it.
Yeah, appreciate the work, appreciate our granting agencies and those who helped us get that funding. So anything else? We will close out item two, and Ms. Reyes, thank you for addressing my concerns when we didn't say the CIP was part of the budget stuff, so I'm looking on agendas and trying to find where did we approve the CIP? And now it will say it's in there, so thank you for doing that last year and however long we've been doing it, so.
And Mr. Condor's done a great job also with making sure that the presentation focuses on what has changed, you know, so that so that y'all really have that, and it's because we know it's a lot of information and it's presented at different times, and so he's done a fantastic job of really focusing on what has changed and and kind of keeping that narrow scope.
Last year, this year, always a good presentation. Thank you, Mr. Condor.
Thank you, Mr. Condor.
And on to item three.
Receive a staff presentation regarding the utility assistance program and provide direction to the city manager.
Our final work session presentation is a follow-up to the utility assistance discussion City Council had during the proposed FY twenty-five budget presentation at the August twentieth council meeting. Our utility billing staff work has been working with customers every day to create payment plans or provide them with options for additional assistance to avoid disconnections. During the discussion two weeks ago, there were requests for data related to utility payment plans and disconnections. This presentation provides the information requested as well as short and long-term recommendations to allocate utility assistance funding to two to three agencies. We also identified some barriers in the current process and have proposed some improvements. I'll now turn it over to Finance Director John Locke to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Locke.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As Ms. Reyes pointed out, the purpose of this is to respond to some questions that City Council had at the budget workshop and and also to share with council some steps forward that that we're recommending in changing the the way that that we allocate the city funding for utility assistance. Beginning with just the utility payment plans in general, payment plans can be extended as long as they're made at least one day prior to the disconnection date. And those by default, those extensions can be up for up to two weeks. There there'll be, yes, ma'am.
How much notification do we give? Is it ten days a week?
Yeah, so we have, if you take a a bill date, an account as a bill date of the first, the the due date will be on the eighteenth, eighteen days later. The customer will receive a courtesy call on the on the sixteenth, two days before the due date, if we haven't received payment, letting them know that we haven't received payment on this account. If no payment is received by the due date, on the following day, there is a there's a ten percent penalty, and a letter goes out, a a disconnection letter, letting the customer know that their account is past due, and that if they don't get in touch with us or make payment on the account by the twenty-eighth, which would be twenty-eight days from the bill date, that their account will be disconnected.
I I'm looking at the notification time from notification to cutoff. What was that, about ten days?
Ten days, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question with that.
Turn your mic, okay.
Yes, go ahead. Is that also regarding, you said there's ten percent of the bill is is the line or whatever?
Yes.
Is there a way to get that into just a a solid number? Because those rates, if somebody doesn't have the money to pay for it, you know, the likelihood of adding that extra money is a real burden. Can we make it like just ten dollars if you're late on a bill? Just make it final at that?
That is how it's set in ordinance right now, is the ten percent that actually comes from the the ordinance that that staff follows, you know, when when that fine is put on the accounts. I mentioned in the, or we mentioned in the the budget workshop presentation that the water wastewater and the water, other fees and charges were going to be reviewed during fiscal year twenty-five, and we can bring those back to City Council for discussion as well, those those penalties. So if that is something that council would like to change, then we can have that discussion.
I'd like to look at it.
Okay.
I I would too, and I would too, and mainly because our bills just keep getting getting more expensive, right? And as you get into some of these households that are at five, six, seven hundred dollar utility bills, an extra sixty, seventy dollars really has an impact, and I think it really, I would be open to looking at some straight fees. I'm totally open to that.
What what is the penalty?
Ten percent.
No, what is it designed to cover? Why why is it there? Is it to? That's if you pay it, right? You're just you're paying it, you're not getting disconnected, but you're paying it late?
Right, if if you pay after, and I I believe that there is a utility billing would allow a courtesy adjustment, you know, of that fee if you're a customer who isn't, you know, late and and you were just late and you call.
One time.
Yeah, one time, then utility billing would allow a courtesy adjustment for that. Other than that, you know, late fees are just like late fees on any other type of account that you have, they encourage the the customer to to make their payment on time.
Yeah, I'm 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 with y'all on the the ten percent. Pick a number, twenty-five bucks or something, because we need something, but I don't know that needs to be ten percent, because that's across your entire, because it's all billed as one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thing. And yeah, that's ten percent's going to be a lot of dollars, so. Mr. Pentalian, can we have that conversation, or does one of us need to do the formal, put it on the agenda, in which case I'll do that in a memo and.
I believe Director John Locke indicated that there was an opportunity to revisit that during an upcoming conversation. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, it what those fees are just some of the fees that we were going to be reviewing as as part of the fiscal year twenty-five fee review. There there wasn't any time necessarily set in stone, so if there was a particular time you would like those to come back, that that is something, some guidance that that you could provide.
I think so.
And Mayor, it's posted for direction to city manager, so you all can just do it from the dice today if you want to direct them to come back.
We 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 want to look at the ten percent and maybe do something different, maybe a flat fee or something, but as the bills have gone up, the ten percent has certainly gone up, and we all have concerns.
Okay.
And we just want to discuss that at a future date, and when those fees come back before us, if that's the time, and that's like really soon.
Okay. We'll look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, then what we're doing now is if someone gets their utilities turned off, we're charging them the regular fee, the disconnection fee, and the ten percent?
Yes.
I'm assuming so.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes, sir.
Well, we'll we'll talk about all that when we talk about the fees, so let's see how we can help people get things paid.
Okay. When when a customer will call in and and speak with a utility billing clerk, at the time that we're speaking with them, the the clerk will go through all the agencies that are out there that can assist the customer. The Community Action is was one of the primary agencies. They have the the two federal and state programs for energy and water assistance, and then they also have the the dollars that the city provides. The city provides a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for utility assistance. And the way Community Action works is that they will use the federal and state dollars first, and when they run out of that money, then they'll use the city's money. And then there there's a list of some other organizations that are out there that also provide assistance that the the clerk will provide contact information to the customer if they're needing assistance. As we get into the actual disconnect process, we we just went through an example of a of an account that built on the first that that would be disconnected by the on the twenty-eighth if there was no contact made, you know, and that contact could be calling for and extending the payment like what we discussed on another slide. They don't necessarily have to pay by the twenty-eighth, they just need to call utility billing and let let us know what's going on. There are some instances where the account will not be disconnected. First is weather-related, so if the high temperatures are predicted to reach a hundred degrees for two consecutive days, or if the National Weather Service issues a heat advisory during that disconnection period, then that we will not do disconnects during that period. On the other side of the spectrum is for cold temperatures, and that's if the temperatures are predicted to remain thirty degrees or below for the next twenty-four hours, then we will not do any disconnects during that period.
And I don't know who to ask. When we have our conversation that we're going to have about fees, if we have any concerns about changing this, would that be the time? Can all that be discussed at the same time? I assume it's all in the same place.
The only thing that I want to ask Mr. Locke, yes, I think definitely we can do whatever that is. What I would want to know is because of the rate modeling and all of that that's gone into where things are set for this current budget, how does that impact anything? Like, if they were to decide to go in.
Based on averages and all that good stuff.
Right, exactly. So just want to make sure, it's a good conversation, it's just in terms of timing, you know, and and when when we do this as part of this process. So I just want to get some clarification so that we can we can get that information.
The penalties are factored into the the budget, you know, it's part of it's part of the overall revenue that comes into the funds.
I'm I'm talking about these?
Yes.
I'm talking about maybe thirty-five degrees instead of thirty-two or something like that, but even that's going to impact, could impact the model.
That that isn't so much of a concern, it's more about like the ten percent that we're talking about, but if you're talking about this, I don't see that this is this is less of a concern, because the other thing he and I had talked about that's not on here that we're going to do in terms of a memorializing it is just to make sure that also we're not doing it before holidays either. If the intent of the council is that you give people time to be able to remedy the situation before they're disconnected, then we want to make sure that it's not on the Fridays and it's also not right before a holiday. So that's something else that we're going to internally put together for staff. The thing that I would want to know on the ten percent when we discuss that and we bring that back is in regard to the revenues that he just mentioned, but also in regard to cost recovery.
Yeah.
For providing the service, so we can do that.
Discussion, yeah, I'm I'm concerned about these also.
Okay.
I'm kind of concerned that that logic about putting that into your budget when you don't know exactly who's going to be late or whatever, to even add those numbers to begin with, I would say not to. And I just really think that we need to have a solid ten dollars.
Well, we'll have that discussion later, but they they look what they look at what the history is.
Sure.
And we'll have that conversation when we, that full conversation.
And Mayor, if I can, as part of that conversation, I'd like to see the historical data of the amount of revenue collected from those late fees. Have they changed over time as rates have increased?
Yeah, they'll bring that to us.
I'm just making sure.
At least three to five years.
I want to make sure that we have that data.
Yes, you're right, we we need that for, yes. And yes, that's good about holidays, because, you know, if you just missed paying your bill because you messed up and just missed it, and the letter comes and you've gone for a Christmas break or something, then, yeah, that's a problem.
And to address your question about this, this, these different times when we do not disconnect are in a policy, so we could bring that policy as well.
I want to make sure that's coming back when the ten percent and all the other stuff, we just need to look at the whole.
The whole picture.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
This slide provides some background information on the number of disconnects that we have, really on the residential side. There there are some commercial disconnects and not not that many. So what this shows, it provides a two-year history, last fiscal year for a whole year outlook, and then fiscal year twenty-four, and this, the average amount accounts billed is as of July twenty twenty-four, and and so you can see the difference between twenty-three and twenty-four. The total accounts have grown from a little over thirty-five thousand to thirty-six thousand. And of those, thirty thousand seven hundred are residential accounts. So those are the total, that's the average amount of resident residential accounts that were billed during a month this year.
Apartment complexes, is that residential or commercial?
Residential.
Okay, so if a new apartment complex goes up and there's a hundred front doors, do we see a hundred on here or one?
It it would, it would probably depend on how they're metered.
I think they're individually metered. Okay, what we're what we're being told for somebody who's not talking into the microphone. Yeah, if you'll repeat that, Mr. Locke.
My apologies, and actually, if if Christine can come up and repeat it, she might be clearer than what I can. This is our utility billing manager, Christine Avalos.
We're glad that you're here. We just want to get you on record and let make sure everybody watching at home can can hear the facts, because you clearly know what you're talking about.
Okay, so if it's an apartment complex that has a hundred units, those are going to be residential, let's just say all of those are built for electrics, you're going to see a hundred bills there. And then a separate meter, which would be like the clubhouse, that would be considered a commercial, so that's a separate one.
Okay.
Okay, or if it's a water account, then that would be one account because it's built directly to the apartment complex because they allocate utilities to the tenants.
Right, they include utilities, but for electric, they make everybody pay their own.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. It's just I was expecting more than six hundred and forty in a year change, but that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Please continue, and and thank you for this information.
Mayor, and I apologize. Yeah, I I do have a question, I think you answered it a couple of seconds ago. If there's an apartment complex that has ninety units and they only have one meter, you said you're charging the water with the electrical bill?
You're talking about electric or water?
Water.
Okay.
Because some apartment complexes have, you know, one meter for several duplexes.
Yes, yes, and and that's that's my understanding in that instance, then that there would just be one bill for, one bill sent out for that meter that's covering, you know, multiple living units. On the electric side, they're they would see the individual bill for each one of those living units.
Because they have meters.
Because they have meters.
A meter for each unit in most cases.
How do they determine who's using more than the other?
On water, they don't, it's just they charge X dollars for water, and if I'm using more than you, average it out, yeah.
Okay, I was just kind of confused now, thank you.
Yeah, I think the water and wastewater is usually included with the electric because of individual usage. There's meter for each.
Yes.
Plus, they can, I don't know how you'd meter the individual water in apartment complex, that might be tough. Okay, thank you. This is good information to have here.
So can you go back to the previous slide, please? Okay, so if you go to the the middle section, that's where the you you have those, the average residential bill count on a monthly basis. So for fiscal year twenty-four, that's the little over thirty thousand. Of those accounts, there were a total of twenty-nine hundred and forty-five disconnects so far year-to-date. If you look at last fiscal year, it was three thousand five hundred total disconnects. And I want to point out that that twenty-nine hundred is as of August, so there's only one more month left in this fiscal year for for those disconnects. Down below, it shows of those total disconnects, how many times the an account was disconnected? Because some of those twenty-nine hundred are the same account being disconnected multiple times. So of the twenty-nine hundred, twenty-one hundred in fiscal year twenty-four have been disconnected only one time. And then you can see some accounts have been disconnected over six times. You have eleven, there's eleven accounts have been disconnected over six times. So that just kind of gives you a breakdown between accounts that are repeatedly having having these issues and and then the one-time accounts, which are by far the majority. And on the next slide, it will provide some some information related to accounts receiving utility assistance. So you still have those same residential bill counts that we had from the previous slide, so for fiscal year twenty-four, that thirty thousand seven hundred. Of those accounts, five hundred and eighty accounts received some sort of utility assistance. And this too is as of August twenty twenty-four. Of those five hundred and eighty accounts, a hundred and seven of them were disconnected, even though they did receive some sort of utility assistance. It may not have been in the instance of when they received the utility assistance, but at some point, they were disconnected during this year. So the there's eighty-two percent of the accounts that receive utility assistance avoid being disconnected, so there is a high success rate there for the accounts that do receive assistance. Below is the similar information, but for accounts with payment extensions. So the total extensions in fiscal year twenty-four to date are seventy-one hundred, and of those, if you look at what each individual account is, is is just over nineteen hundred. So what that means is that on average, accounts. So what that means is that on average, accounts are receiving a payment extension about three and a half times. Because there are nineteen hundred individual accounts that received a payment extension and the total payment extensions is seventy-one hundred. Of, of those individual payment extensions, five hundred and eighty-six of those accounts were disconnected at some point during the year. So on, on those accounts, you have a seventy percent success rate of avoiding being disconnected.
But isn't there a limit of how many times a year you can use the utility assistance?
Two times.
That's what I was thinking. Once or twice, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This, this next slide provides just a list of, a list of, it will provide a, a list of different agencies that are out there that, where customers can, can receive assistance. And I wanted to make sure I point out that this is, some of these agencies do not provide utility assistance. We refer to these as emergency assistance. Some, some of these agencies may only provide rental assistance. But these are agencies within the city that provide some level of assistance to, to residents. And these are agencies that the city provides funding to.
Yeah, and, and the point that, that I wanna make sure we make here is for the utilities and community action, the hundred and twenty thousand, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, that's dedicated to utility assistance, correct? The amount of money that we give to these others is not limited to utility assistance. They're not getting dollars just for utility assistance. They're helping people with rent and groceries and all other kinds of things.
Yes.
Yes, and so they're, they may get some money from us, but it's not dedicated to utilities in particular. That's, that's not, for example, Salvation Army doesn't have twelve thousand dollars. Just, that, that's what they got this year and they're covering a lot of stuff. So that was my concern about this slide, that it, it could imply that they're getting twelve out of the utility assistance fund and really Community Action is the only one that's getting that. And they're getting the one twenty and then we'll see later that they're not using it all.
That is correct. Also, there, there was a question that, that came through about Lifeline. There isn't a slide about Lifeline rates in this presentation. This is a, a good slide to, to mention the Lifeline program. And it's, it's available for the water wastewater rates. It's a special rate. It's an income-based program. Right now, the, the city has an agreement with Community Action that outlines the, the criteria that a customer needs to meet in order to qualify for those rates. So part of the application process, when a customer submits an application to Community Action to see if they qualify for any of the federal, state, or city funding, the, the Community Action will also see if they qualify for Lifeline as well. And, and they'll let us know if, if they do. The, the biggest criteria is the, is the income criteria. And the program is tied to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs programs and which, and their income rates guidelines are tied to the Austin, San Marcos metro area. And, and so they cannot be within fifty percent of the maximum amount allowed for that, for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs administer programs. So the total income cannot exceed that in order to qualify for the Lifeline rates, which are just reduced water and wastewater rates.
And we don't have that for electric, correct? I didn't see it on the list.
Correct, that, that is correct. And staff is compiling the responses back to some of those questions. And my understanding is, the reason why is, is at the time of the Lifeline was created, there wasn't any of these other programs available such as the state and, the state and federal energy and water assistance. So that's why we created the, the water Lifeline rates. And, and electric just wasn't created at the time. I, I don't know when electric came online, when the city took over the electric, that there was already those programs in place. So, so the thought was is that the, the state and federal funding that Community Action has, as well as the city funds that were being put towards it, would help customers with the electric rates. But there has not been a Lifeline created for electric.
Go ahead.
A question. Several times I've been asked that they, or I've been told that they will call the city and ask them for the names of the agencies that are out there. And they only give them maybe one or two names. Do we have our staff that's role-versed on agencies?
So Christine, you wanna address that as far as what the, what the protocol is whenever, what the standard protocol? And I know that also while she's doing that, we also have a, a new list that Diane Insley at the library has put together and it's in English and it's in Spanish. And we kind of had showed that at the last meeting. And so that, we have also made sure that we're getting to all the departments. So that if a question comes and it's not even just to utilities, but to anybody, then we can be able to navigate and help them find some of that. But you wanna talk about what our standard protocol is whenever?
Yes, so if a customer calls that they can't pay their bill, the clerk will offer the payment extension and then she will also offer the agencies that are available. They're on our webpage. We have them displayed in the lobby. They will just talk to them about their different options, the list that you saw up here on the slide. So all of that is automatic. Something else that we're adding to our delinquent notices, the disconnect notice, is we're gonna add the link that leads us to our utility customer page saying that, you know, they can go there and they can look at the agencies there as well. But that is something that every clerk always does. They will offer that information.
Great. There's always two sides of the coin. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, always.
Well, I think your, your question is, if, if they're on the phone, maybe they're not web savvy, do they get the entire list? Does the clerk tell them all the different options?
Yes, they can give them the, the numbers, names and numbers for them.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right.
Yep, and I was thinking, web link on the, on the disconnect notice and you're two steps ahead of me.
And let me ask a question while you're there, Christine. So are our interactions with customers, are they recorded?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's another thing, just as far as, you know, if, cuz I know sometimes you, you hear from people that they maybe didn't have a very good experience. And so those kinds of things, we wanna know about and we wanna know, you know, what, what we could do to look at it. Because, okay, like you said, there's two sides, but also if there's training opportunities or things that we can work on. So if y'all, any kind of specific information that you can provide us to help us with that, then that is something that we can pull and look at that information.
Date and time?
Yes. And I mean, if there's an account or, you know, something like that, that would be helpful just to give us that. So I just wanted to give council that information, that context, so that if we get the information, cuz a lot of times people will give us very general information of like, people just don't like that, you know, their interaction with utility billing or they're not very friendly or whatever. And it's like, okay, we just need a little bit more information so that we can follow up on it. We're, we're willing to do it. We just need the specifics so we can do that. So I just wanted to give you all that context.
And what are we doing for our customers?
What are we doing for our customers?
I don't wanna say that, the attitude.
Can't help you there.
Just keep smiling. All right, anything else?
No, I think the, the trick in, in customer service is, is, and I know y'all do this in your customer service training, is it may be the twenty-fifth time you've told that today, but it's the first time for that customer.
Oh, yes, for sure. We do. And the supervisors are told to review calls every so often to kinda audit it. And then we listen to the staff in the call center and the cashier station to make sure. I know every time I walk in, I say hello and I smile at them to make sure that they smile back. That's something that we really do because we do get the good and the bad. You know, you don't ever hear the good. You always hear the bad. But that is one thing that we do emphasize to make sure that the girls are smiling on the phone when they're talking to customers. And I know sometimes it can be challenging with customers when they call in because they're upset. But they definitely do try to diffuse the situation. And then if it has to get escalated to a supervisor or myself, we, we do our best to try to take it down.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay.
This slide shows the total utility assistance that's been awarded during twenty twenty-four. And it, the first couple with Community Action. We mentioned earlier that Community Action will first see if the customer apply or qualifies for any of the federal or state programs. And that's where you see the, the first is the Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program. And the total amount awarded to customers in San Marcos is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand and there's three hundred and seventy-five different accounts. The, the next program is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program and the total dollar amount is fifty-eight thousand. And the total number of accounts that received assistance through that is a hundred and thirty-eight. And then finally, the, the city program, which is, that's the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that the city sets aside, the total amount awarded is fourteen thousand and the number of accounts that benefited from that are ninety-nine. That, the very bottom asterisks there are just from, from other sources. And the total use, utility assistance received through all of these various agencies and organizations is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That benefited five hundred and eighty accounts.
So that could come from like Saint Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army, any of those.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I, I had a question on that and forgot to ask it. Wow.
And, and so you see there, the in total, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for six hundred and twelve accounts. And one of the, the biggest, you know, things that I think we're gonna talk about is, for the city program, we're setting aside a hundred and twenty thousand and, and you see only fourteen thousand of that is going to, has been used to date so far this year. And the big reason why is, you know, because the federal and state money is used first. Now, we, we have received word from Community Action that the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program will not continue in calendar year twenty twenty-five. So that will go away. So that's something to keep in mind and that's something we, we just learned from Community Action. So.
So that's gonna eat into our hundred and six thousand we thought was left over.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is that just a lack of federal funding?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
It's just funding from the fed, federal government.
Okay.
So in fiscal year twenty nineteen, that's when the, the city increased the total amount that is set aside from sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand to assist residents with their utility bills. And then if you look at the far right, there's a chart there that says city-funded utility assistance. And that just shows from nineteen nineteen to the current fiscal year, how much money was used annually. I, I think when, during twenty nineteen, you can see there, we were starting to, to get around forty, forty-five thousand. I think that's what the thought was, let's increase this where the city is growing. And, you know, since then, it has trailed off somewhat. Last year, it was just under twenty thousand and so far, year-to-date this year, it's just over fourteen thousand. Another bullet on here is just bringing to light that in fiscal year twenty-one, the city set aside coronavirus relief funds for utility assistance. A total of a million dollars was set aside to assist customers at that time. And a hundred and seventy-four thousand for rent and utility assistance. That was administered through Community Action and the Blanco River Regional Recovery Team that commonly referred to as BR three T. That brings us to our recommendation slide. On the short term, we would like to proceed with a request for proposals to allocate a portion of the, of that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars utility assistance to multiple agencies, whether that be two or three agencies. And also develop a, a process long-term of how we're going to handle this moving forward. If, if, if we would alternate agencies or if we stay with the, the same agencies. Just as a first step, though, we, we do wanna do a request for proposal to see what kind of programs some organizations out there would, would be able to provide with that hundred and twenty thousand dollars instead of giving it all to community, one organization and then have it administered in the way that it currently is. And some additional recommendations is, you know, refining the eligibility criteria of agencies that are administering these programs. Even going back to the Lifeline program, I'm not sure how old this, this agreement is or, you know, when, when it originated. And, and it, and we just keep renewing it so that Community Action administers the program. But if we really look into it, I mean, are these the criteria that the city wants to use to get people onto the Lifeline rates? I'm not sure the last time that, you know, those have been looked at to determine that we still want to do that. So just, that's why we're talking about refining some of these criteria. There was even some examples mentioned by council of how we're assisting, you know, the individual whose car broke down and that instance created an issue where they can't pay their utility bill. If they were to go through Community Action, you know, that process may take a couple of weeks. And, and the midpoint, you know, this customer's account might be disconnected because they can't get a fast enough turnaround or they might have fees or penalties added to the account. So by looking at the, refining the programs and that, that we offer, customers make sure that we're reaching the, the broader space of customers with that hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we can. Streamlining the process. Right now, all the, 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 the majority of the money, as you saw from that slide, goes through one organization and it's one application process that that organization is determining eligibility for.
Yeah, and it's the time, like you said, the two weeks that, I'm not complaining. I'm just stating that's what it is and sometimes people need help sooner. And some of these other agencies, because of the way they operate, they can operate faster. The person may still end up at Community Action for other assistance. But yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to others being able to take advantage of this process that we have and make it available to more folks.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So apologize, it was like a lag where I wasn't tuning in. But how do you know that the other organizations have the capacity to distribute the funds in a more timely manner? The reason I ask is, I feel like a lot of times in like the nonprofit sector, it's like lack of extra help. So like, is it one of those things where we need to consider providing like money for extra support staff, right? Or is it one of those things that another entity has capacity, but like until when, I guess?
That, that certainly will be a consideration. So when we would issue a request for, request for a proposal to see what type of program that, and capacity that organizations out there have, that, that would definitely be a consideration is them being able to provide this program. Because if, you know, if we were to have to provide staffing, additional money for staffing, then that's, that's taken away from what we can provide to, to the residents. And so all of that would need to be balanced out.
Yeah, my, my thought is that they're providing these dollars now, but it's out of money that they could have provided, funding for food or diapers or other things that they're doing. And then, and they don't actually get the money. Don't they do a voucher and then it just comes to us and then we, and we actually take it from the fund to apply their?
That's, that's how we do Community Action.
Yeah, so they're, they're not actually gonna get dollars. They're just gonna get access to this other funding.
If, if that's the way that we arrange the program, yes, ma'am.
I would, I would think so.
Yes.
Um, I guess the, the, I guess my, maybe this is like too in the weeds, but the voucher thing, I get that. But what, we have San Marcos neighbors who, like, for example, myself and the folks in my neighborhood, we, our water is the city, but our power is Bluebonnet. So in those situations, I imagine Community Action has another arrangement.
Yes, yes. And there was a, a slide that, that we showed how much ener, energy assistance. That was just how much San Marcos residents received. I'm sure that Community Action would also be able to use, you know, for those customers that are on Bluebonnet or.
Yeah, cuz it's a federal program.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Right, and they're still San Marcos residents. It's just they don't, right? So when you say it was San Marcos residents, does that mean that does capture folks? The numbers does capture folks that had Bluebonnet or did you mean like San Marcos customers?
My understanding is these numbers are just the. My understanding is these numbers are just the accounts that, that the city has, correct? Yeah, it's so, it, this would just be the customers with city electric services.
Okay. Or, but some of those, we were talking about all those disconnect stats, that could have been for water.
Yes.
That could be somebody who's got Bluebonnet Electric, and all we're charging them for is water, well, and the resource recovery, that other thing. Yeah, and just so that it's clear, I'm not suggesting that we use our funds to pay another entity, this is only for San Marcos Electric Utility, how Community Action does theirs, and it may be for somebody with Bluebonnet, they're gonna need to go to Community Action in order to have access to that federal funding to pay their electric bill.
This is for extra money, because the, we have funded for Community Action for just general utility assistance, right? Does that mean that for those initiatives, it was only for clients that the money's gonna come back to us, or was that open to Bluebonnet people?
Yeah, the, the one hundred and twenty thousand that the city contributes in city funds is only for those customers where the money was going to come back to the city, for the city account.
Oh wow, that's wild. But they've got, they spent two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars assisting people through the federal dollars, and that would have only been for us, so there could have been some people that, that, so that was water, and then there's money for P E C or Bluebonnet that isn't reflected here, but that got paid by Community Action.
To Bluebonnet?
Out of the federal program.
True.
Federal, okay.
Yes.
And that federal money, was that money to us, to them? Or was that money to them?
Actually, we're not getting any money, it's credits in the, out of the one hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, so then we are using that money to help?
Yes.
Not, like Bluebonnet customers, if they're San Marcos residents?
No.
No.
Not, not our one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but if, if a customer were, were to have Bluebonnet and electric and city water, wastewater, Community Action may, has federal funding to help them with their Bluebonnet electric.
Oh, okay.
Yes ma'am.
I feel like, it's, I wish there was like a, like a chart that outlined all these different things, because it's very, like, not just like that chart, but like, to help me understand all the moving pieces, but like, I feel like that's really in the weeds, like, that's like a, like, because even Blue, like, our BR three T, like, like you said, like, they have county money, I think that's expiring, or one of the monies is expiring before the others, and ta, 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 ta. And it's like, just depending on what the funding source is, it like, can impact it, but it could also not, like, it's like a whole thing, and I get it all confused, and a lot of our neighbors, they don't have like the, the name of like, oh, I didn't qualify for this because of this, and so then, it gets really convoluted, um, to try and like reorient them, but.
Can Community Action provide the number of dollars and accounts of Bluebonnet and P E C?
We can ask them, yes ma'am.
If, if they can, great, if not, that's, but I bet they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what this means is that somebody may need to, okay, so somebody could go to, I'm gonna say, other agencies. So somebody could go, if we do all this, and they follow, meet our criteria, and they end up being on the program, so they could go there, and maybe they could get like their water done, and then still have to go to Community Action to get the electric, because it's not S M U, but would that be enough that they could get for their water, maybe to get that first payment on the payment plan? See what I'm saying? She knows what I'm talking about. Please. My, my point is I would get some funds, but I, I, I know that the electric is usually way more than the water.
Okay, so, for example, like the question that Alyssa had, Community Action has one application. Okay, so the customer goes in and they apply with, with them, they see what they qualify for. If they qualify for C A P, which is the electrics, federal funding, they will cut them a check for that and send that to us. I'm gonna use you as the example, if you live here in San Marcos and you have electric through P E C and water here, they're gonna process that application. And if they can help you with water through the city, then they're gonna help that through LEWAP or through the S M U funding, and then they will process their application, and my thought process is they're gonna cut a check to P E C, because it's one application. It's a San Marcos address, that's, we can confirm with them, but that is my thought process, because they have just one application. That's how they qualify our customers.
Right.
Okay.
But, but if I'm doing that, and, again, the, the, the car repair example, I need something tomorrow to, to keep from being disconnected. If I can get something from the other agency to cover the U, San Marcos utility part of it, take the electric out, so I can get that funding from them by the disconnect deadline, then is, does that, is that enough to start my payment plan to keep the disconnect from happening while Community Action is working on my electric?
Yes, because.
That was the point I was trying to make.
Whether it's Salvation Army, any of them, they will send us some kind of pledge.
Right.
Those pledges come over and we notate the accounts.
Okay, so it sounds like all that's gonna be the same, what I'm trying to do is just take some of the hundred and six thousand, that's now gonna be down to about forty thousand, that is unused, and help provide that to the other agencies, so that they, basically it's gonna increase their funding sort of like, even though they don't get it, but that's gonna be able to help, I'm trying to get this other money out there and help people. And, and if, if Community Action, because the way they work, no complaints, it's just the way it is, if some of these others can get this money out here and help people, and cut down on some of those disconnects, that's what I'm trying to do. But you made an excellent point, because we've got a lot of people that are on other electric.
Right. Well, and that's why.
Are you, aren't you?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
And additional water, too. We didn't discuss that, additional water providers, too. There's some people on crystal clear and S M U, right?
Uh, many with crystal clear anymore.
A few. There's some outlying, there's some outliers, I just wanted to point that.
And that was really what, with Griselle and Christine doing kind of some program evaluation of the current Utility Assistance Program, that was really predominantly the themes that we heard, is, is just that you've got the, the folks who need more than just utility assistance, and that's why Community Action is helpful.
Exactly.
And so we want to keep that there, but what's also needed is for people who only need utility assistance.
Right.
And you don't want them to feel like they have to go through this rigorous.
Right.
Application, and so that they can get the assistance more, more quickly, and so.
If they're S M U.
Exactly, so that's what we were looking at in terms of.
That's what I've been trying to do.
And that's what we are, that's what we're proposing, is that if council gives us direction, that we can go out, do an R F P, and try to get, okay, who needs the help, who can give us the help? Is it in terms of needing administration costs, is it in direct assistance, you know, what, what does that look like, so that then we can evaluate that?
Yeah.
And bring a recommendation back to council.
I'm, I'm thinking the administration costs, they're already bearing, it's just the money's coming out of their limited funds instead of our hundred thousand dollars that we've had left over. And that's all I'm trying to do, is to get that money used.
Yeah, I, I have a comment, um, I mean, for full transparency, I am the council representative on the Community Action Board, but even before that, I, I've, I, all praises to Community Action, I think they do a good job in resource navigation, um, and I think it's just like a capacity meets overwhelmingly increasing needs. But I will name that, I, at least it's my perception, the other entities in our town who do those resource, like the deployment of these type of funds, whether it's like their own personal fund, or they've like collaborated with other agencies and entities, I think that my perception is they have done a pretty good job in the resource navigation as well, but like, to your point, Stephanie, I think it's, Community Action is, has been consistent, right? Like, there's like a, and they have, they're like a whole machine, right? Like, they have all these, like, connections, and, like, they're like a unicorn. But I, I do think that, it makes me feel better to pursue this, knowing that folks like in, you know, Saint Vincent de Paul, who else have we, Southside, especially, I feel like Southside has really upped their game in resource navigation within like the last year even, um, like community collaborations, I do, I, I just wanna name that, I think it makes me comfortable knowing that the people who would, I would assume, like, respond to this R F P, know how to provide that type of navigation. They're not just like randoms, right? I mean, I hope.
Well, and to your, to your point, like about, you know, their help, is that even when Griselle was looking at some of the agencies, and she would call, you know, not everybody would answer their phones.
Right.
And so it was like, okay, well, what if someone really does need help, how are they getting that? So that, those kinds of things are deliverables that we're gonna want to make sure that we can look at with an R F P in terms of what types of response that we get from folks, so that would definitely be something, because y'all, I mean, y'all made it very clear, you want it to be that, okay, if someone really needs help, they, they're in a bind, they need, you know, to get something quickly, that we can look and see how we can do that in a more, in a more like quick turnaround time.
Because if somebody's, you know, lost a job, or had other, they're, they're likely to end up Community Action anyway, but this'll at least stop that one disconnect. Okay.
Yeah, um, mayor? And may, maybe I, I'm confused, but at one time, I think residents were allowed to donate a certain amount to help out the electric, the electrical bills. If that is so, how much money do we have in there, and how is that distributed around?
We do have a utility donation lot on the stub to give you the dollar amount, I don't have that, I'd have to come back and provide that.
Right, and how do you tap into that? I mean, do you keep it aside, or is you're to give it away to?
Is that part of the one twenty? I don't know, but mine is automatically deducted, and so I don't, I'm gonna say don't have the opportunity to check that box and write my check for a little bit higher amount. And don't we have donation to animal shelter on there now?
Oh, yeah, it would be cool to know what's up there, because like, I can imagine, like, especially during, like, leading up to the seasons where people are more likely to donate to charitable causes, you know, like, there's like these hotspots throughout the, the year, even like amplifying that as like, hey, you could opt into this, and I, I've, I've seen the little box. Um, I've just never really known, I assume that money was going into, like, whatever we put towards Community Action.
I'd have to go back and see what G Ls it actually goes into. I don't wanna lie to you and tell you it goes here, but it, it, it should go into that one twenty, but to give you a exact answer, I'd like to come back and tell you that.
Could you allow me, who does the automatically deduct, out of my bank account, actually, to tell you one time, always add another ten dollars for this and for this every month? I would do that, but I don't know that we have that set.
No, it's just your auto pay for your bill.
Right, but the auto pay could have another twenty dollars on it, if we had that mechanism to do that. Can we look into that?
Can, yes, we can look into it.
Yeah, I think that would be awesome, and also to know, like, to what extent people are donating to that, because one awesome thing that sets our community apart is, like, folks who have, who get help, once they're back on their feet, they're, what I have seen is they're very likely to go back and wanna help, because like, they were just in that boat. So I would, I would imagine if, that folks would perhaps pour into that more, to see that, that'd be cool.
You see, I, I think that'd be a habit, like an emergency fund, where you need it now, we have a pocket of money here, instead of going through the whole process of waiting.
Well, the, when we have that discussion next time, they can let us know how much people are, are giving, but I, I'm serious, and, and if somebody's paying online, now, if they're paying, I, I, I don't get onto your system and do it, what I would do is I would do it from my bank, and say, send them a check, but if, or payment, but if it was twenty dollars more, you'd probably just credit me to the next month, not knowing that I want ten dollars go to this and ten dollars to the animal shelter. So, if we had a mechanism where that was set up, okay, yeah, well.
We can look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Gonzalez.
And I, I was just gonna mention, when, when I was at the City of Clean, they, they did have a program exactly like what you were talking about, where it could be auto-drafted in addition to their utility bill for those that wanted to make a monthly donation towards one of those programs.
Yeah, we got that five dollars for the green something electric.
Well, there, I know that there was also, was it for green space? We had something for green space, we have animal shelter, and then utility. Park donate, for Parkland, those, those were the things that I'm remembering.
Well, we're leaving money on the table if we're not making that available with the automated stuff, so, yeah, let us know. When this comes back, let's, let us know.
So, y'all are wanting to move forward with an R F P to do this, I know.
Council, y'all, in order to let other, other agencies have access to the one hundred and twenty, are y'all good with that? Let them do an R F P, and you'd, it would be defined who does it, and how it's done, and you're gonna have criteria, like, you gotta have people who can speak Spanish, I assume that would be one of the criteria, that if you don't, then, you know, maybe not.
Yeah, I'm, I'd, I'd like it a little more defined, especially as these programs continue to grow, and with the Human Services Advisory Board not having real direction potentially on this, too, so it'd be nice to have some defined parameters with R F P.
And staff will come up with those, will we see those before that goes out?
We, we can, it's just a matter of it's gonna, I mean, we'll, we'll need to schedule it in order to do that, because we're gonna start working on the R F P, if there are some things y'all wanna have us include now, that we absolutely could, it just may delay the, how quickly we turn around.
They'll delay it more if it gets out there, and then we look at it and go, oh, that's not what we meant.
Exactly.
That'd be worse.
Exactly, we wanna make sure we're capturing your intent, so, I mean, that's, that's not a problem if y'all want us to bring it back.
I think we need it to come back.
We were anticipating about three months to, to get that out, so we can, we can bring that before.
We, we need to see it.
Okay.
Okay. Did you have something?
I guess, the R F P process, is that gonna cost us money, like, okay, extra money, okay?
Well, no, yeah, we do that in-house.
Cool, um, yeah, I think the mayor, to the mayor's point, it would be helpful to see other stuff, um, yeah, I just wanted one quick comment, like, I have approached this conversation around utility assistance with a lot of frustration, because I feel like I internalized the feelings of desperation of my constituents, but I appreciate the work being put into this, and also, I think it's important for me to name that our neighbors are willing and able to provide feedback on their experiences navigating resource allocation, and I do appreciate, Griselle, um, working alongside some folks that I referred, and I heard some good feedback, and I think this presentation is indicative of intentionality in listening to neighbors, even when they're, like, it's their complicated situations. So, yeah, I appreciate it.
Mr. Scott, are you?
A yes, um, okay, he's a yes, yes, yes. Okay, great.
So we'll bring back criteria, proposed criteria for y'all to look at as we're getting ready for the R F P to go out on the street, and then, as far as the information to look at the ten percent fee, like for reconnects, historical data of revenues for reconnects, how much we include in the budget, lifeline for electric, how much in donations account, how is it used, how to change the amount that you donate, and then, do you want us to bring that back with the R F P criteria, or do you want us to bring that back when we're doing the budget, looking at the fees? Because that, that, that'll need to be a separate discussion item, or we'll need to be intentional about when we, when we have that.
Can we do it all at once?
We can do it all at once, it would be, yeah, we could bring it back with the R F P process.
And that would be in the next.
The next probably couple of months.
Couple of meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because if we're gonna talk about one part, we're gonna talk about the other, and, and I like it when Mr. Gary doesn't say you're straying from the agenda items.
So we, I just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying with y'all, so that if you had an intent for us to bring it back sooner rather than later.
Yeah, all, all things with utility billing and utility payments.
Okay.
Which are different.
Okay.
Okay, council, anything else? All right, we have closed out item three, and we will move to item four, Mr. Vino.
The city council will convene a executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the terms and conditions of the amended and restated Regional Haze Caldwell County's Area Water Supply and Treatment Contract with the Canyon Regional Water Authority.
Motion for executive session. Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Thanks to both of you, I forgot to thank you for bringing this to us and being here and answering all these questions, great that you were here, thank you, okay.
Okay, Mr. Scott. Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prater. Motion passes six-two-zero with one absent.
Okay, council, we will go into executive session at four forty. We have. We have, we finished our executive session at five forty-two. We are now back in regular session. We are to the part of question and answer with press and public. No one has signed up, so we will move on to adjournment. I will accept a motion. Motion by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by.
Second.
Ms. Garza. Let's vote.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason and Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, and we will conclude this meeting at five forty-four. Thank you all.